All right. Welcome, everybody, to this 2:00 PM meeting of the Sacramento City Council. I now call this meeting to order at 2:04 PM. Madam City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Thank you. Councilmember Kaplan, Councilmember Tao, Mayor Protem Talamontes, Councilmember Valenzuela, Councilmember Guerra, Councilmember Jennings, Councilmember Vang.
I am here.
For the record, Mayor Steinberg will be absent. Vice Mayor Maple.
I am here. Thank you so much. And Mayor Protem Talamontes, will you please lead us in the land acknowledgement and the pledge of allegiance?
Okay. Please rise for the opening acknowledgements in honor of Sacramento's indigenous people and tribal lands. To the original people of this land, the Nisanan people, the Southern Maidu, Valley Plains Miwok, Patwin-Winton peoples, and the people of the Wilton Rancheria, Sacramento's only federally recognized tribe. May we acknowledge and honor the native people who came before us and still walk beside us today on these ancestral lands by choosing together to go... Sorry. Choosing to gather together today in the act of practice of acknowledgement and appreciation for Sacramento's indigenous people, contributions, and lives. Thank you. Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We thank you for that. All right. At this time, we are going to start with a very special presentation by Councilmember Valenzuela.
Wonderful. Thank you, colleagues. It is, you know, honestly, for the past few years, I've had the honor of presenting, of working with CARE California in many capacities. I guess I just want to start with a brief indulgence to say, you know, that the CARE team has worked tirelessly in Sacramento with legal services, advocacy, emergency response, since the support pandemic relief, on and on, really responding to crises as they occur. They've been instrumental in providing supports to folks who are grieving and fighting for their families in Gaza while still living through their grief. And so I just wanted to start this by genuinely thanking CARE and the CARE team for all that you do for our community. And it's really, truly been an honor to work with you on this resolution and so many other things. August is the American Muslim Appreciation Month, and we have so much to appreciate in our Sacramento community. But we do want to highlight two particular organizations that go above and beyond to ensure our local communities' needs are served. Movement for Life is the first organization. They serve the greater Sacramento community by providing educational resources to reduce gun violence in the Sacramento area. Movement for Life was founded by Imam Julius Thibodeau Hassan of Masjad Saber. I'm sorry if I mispronounced that. A Muslim faith leader in Sacramento area. And the Health, Education, Aid, and Leadership are Heal Palestine organization in Sacramento serves the greater Sacramento community by providing educational resources related to the health impact of the crisis in Gaza. Heal Palestine has worked to provide Ahmed, a young boy from Gaza, with treatment for his injuries in the city of Sacramento. These two organizations, Movement for Life and Heal Palestine, are just doing incredible work. It's work from the heart. It's work from the faith. And I just truly am so honored that you're here in Sacramento. I'm honored that you're here with us today to recognize August as Muslim, American Muslim Awareness and Appreciation Month. So I'd really like to invite up Omar Altimimi and then Imam Julius Thibodeau Hassan to come up. And my sincere apologies, sir, if I mispronounce your name, but please come up and share a couple of words about the importance of this month. You're welcome here.
Welcome.
We're all choosing, you know, whose lead to follow. You know, thank you all, councilmembers, Vice Mayor Maple, for signing on to this and, you know, reintroducing this. You know, I want to thank you, Katie, for... Oh, sorry, Councilmember Valenzuela, for introducing this year after year for us. And, you know, for us, it's an opportunity to recognize the efforts of the community, but also to recognize that, you know, just like any other community, Muslim Americans are part of the Sacramento community. We work for it, and, you know, we want to see a better Sacramento for all. And so, yeah, I'll go ahead and start sharing about Heal Palestine. Unfortunately, none of their representatives could be here. But Heal Palestine envisions a future where the youth of Palestine are empowered within health, education, and leadership opportunities that enable them to break barriers, overcome challenges, and build a thriving, united Palestinian society. Their nonprofit is dedicated to providing essential aid, healthcare, and educational resources nurturing a generation of resilient and compassionate leaders who will shape a brighter tomorrow for their communities. Through unwavering commitment to humanitarian work, they aim to foster a culture of hope and empowerment where every young Palestinian can realize their full potential and contribute to a prosperous and peaceful future in Palestine. For Heal, their job is incredibly, you know, they take it on humbly. They do what they can to support Palestinian youth. And in the case of Ahmed, who's a double amputee from Gaza, he is 14-years-old, is in the Sacramento region, here for treatment to be able to walk again with the aid of prosthetics. He is working tirelessly to strengthen his body and to work to improve his life. And, you know, talking with Ahmed, spending time with Ahmed, it's something that teaches us that no matter, you know, our backgrounds, happiness is still something that can be achieved. He always shows up with a smile on his face despite the tragedy that he's faced. And no matter what, he's looking to brighten other people's lives. And so he's a source of inspiration for us. And we're grateful to Heal Palestine for being able to bring him to the Sacramento region for treatment. I know they've been doing this with several children who have actually been able to escape and come to America and look for a better life here and look for treatment here. And so I'll end there, but just wanted to say thank you. And on a more personal note, I know that, you know, this might be my last, one of my last opportunities to say this. We've been working with you all for many years, and some of you may be leaving towards November, or the end of the year, actually. And so just thank you for your continued partnership. We appreciate each and every one of you and your continued partnership with our organization and the work that we do in the region. And so just a very deep from the heart, thank you all. And yeah, I'll go ahead and pass it to Imam Julius to talk about the important work that he's doing with his organization.
Thank you, brother.
Thank you.
Assalamu alaikum. That's peace. Peace and blessings be upon you all. So I've done work with many of you I see up here. Some of you I haven't had the opportunity to meet, and some of you I know from when you were in a different working capacity. Congratulations to those of you who are newly elected. I want to start by saying that these individuals... Did y'all stand up? So this is Movement for Life, a portion of it. There's several, I don't know why, the sisters on our team. We've diversified our team, have several women on the team now, which we thought that was a gap as we transitioned out of Advance Peace into Movement for Life, but pretty much using the same model. These are the individuals who are serving the underprivileged, the underserved, and those who have been deemed unworthy, and those who are driving the gun violence. And we feel that's very important. So a round of applause for these young gentlemen. And our sisters in the work who aren't here. It would definitely be an omission, a flagrant omission on my part if I forgot to mention the work and the unwavering support that we've gotten from Mr. Chet Hewitt and Kai Ying Hang of Sierra Health Foundation, our partnerships with Healing the Hood, our partnerships with A Different Path, WellSpace, Urban League, Macro Partnership. Am I forgetting anybody? Definitely North State Building Associates. And also Rayleigh's, Rayleigh's and Moms Demand Action in every town. And CalVip. I want to say this too. For us, CalVip, we were hearing about the problems at Doco in Old Sacramento, and we were able to work out a budget modification so these, again, they can take their weekends and be down there and have a presence in downtown Sacramento and Old Sacramento because we didn't have the funding to be down there or the manpower to be down there. And they're showing up down there every weekend. What's y'all, should Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, or Saturday and Sunday? Saturday and Sunday nights, getting a lot of appreciation from the businesses down there and from the youth, talking to the youth and explaining to them what they do. Just come down here, have a good time, don't vandalize, don't make this a purge where you come in to meet and fight like we had at Delco a while back. But I just want to say too that looking forward to rebuilding our relationship with you all and being able to work with you all and funding efforts that are serving those who are driving the gun violence, those who are highest at risk, and those who have to have high contact, daily contacts, services provided for them, mental health services. We need to get back to where we're working as an ecosystem. We're not taking credit. I know I probably missed a lot of people who are contributing to the work, but we have to get back to where we're working within an ecosystem where we're not stepping out of our lane of expertise, but we're also respected for our lane of expertise and what we do and the population that we serve. When we get into this competition and working in silos, which we are right now, we see the results of it. When we went on a 28-month run of no juvenile homicides, we had an unofficial ecosystem. It wasn't an official ecosystem, but an unofficial ecosystem where there was a line of communication. People were being respected for the work that they brought, and people knew their lanes and were contributing to the safety of Sacramento as a city as a whole. And so I just wanted to say that, and hopefully that can be a goal for us to get back to in the future. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And I have to say, as an elected leader, we often get to that point where there's certain folks in our phone that we call when we just need something, we need help. You know, there's certain folks that we call when it's like, gosh, something happened. Trying to figure out what happened. What do I do? Omar is one of those folks from CARE, and so is Imam Julius. There was a shooting in my district in July. The young girl affected was not Muslim, and he was still one of the first people I called to try to figure out what was going on, to figure out what I could be doing to better support that community that was impacted by that incident. And so I just really truly want to thank you because to me, this is the story of the American Muslim community across our country and here in Sacramento. You know, they take care of each other, they take care of their people, but they also take care of all of us. And it's a sense of, it's part of the faith, it's part of what they believe, it's part of the love that they share, and it's one of many reasons why I've always been so honored when CARE has approached me to sponsor this resolution every year. It's just one moment every year that we take to appreciate this incredible community of people. So thank you, colleagues, for indulging us. And I'd love to have a couple of resolutions to present while everybody sat down. So now I got to make you stand back up again and come over here. I'd like to take a photo with your indulgence, Vice Mayor, so that we can present these. And I don't know, Councilmember Jennings, if you want to come with me here. Yeah?
Katie, can we get the whole team up?
Yeah, you're going up here. Say hey to everybody.
I do either.
Okay. Do you want to go first if you're on the outside? I'm a little... Hey, do you want to get into it?
I don't need to be in the photo. It's going to help take it.
Let's see. Oh, yeah. I'm... Oh, yeah.
I got one. One, two, three. One, two, three. I got my camera. One, two, three. Thank you.
Yeah. I can also send photos, I don't know.
And we do have airdrop. Hey, thank you so much. Thank you. We appreciate every, all the work that you do in our community. All right, colleagues, while we wait for folks to file out, if you have any items that you would like to speak on consent polls or vote separately, please do punch up, and we'll give folks just a moment to finish up. He texted me and said he would, but, you know, who knows? All right, Councilmember Vang.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'd like to make just a comment on Items 5 and Item 7.
Okay. All right. Councilmember Kaplan.
I would like, as part of the motion, to continue Item 11 for one week and then speak on 7 and 12.
7 and 12, you said? Okay. Councilmember Valenzuela.
I would also like to speak on 7. Thank you.
Okay. Any other members want to speak separately, vote separately? Okay, hearing none. We'll start first with Councilmember Vang on Item 5.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to take this moment to thank Jason from our Parks Department, really for all his great work. This establishment for the CIP is going to go to renovate two playgrounds in District 8. That's the Steve Jones Park and the Mark Hopkins Park that suffered a fire. And we want to make sure that we get our parks and our playground in South Sacramento back to par. So really just want to take this moment to say thank you to Jason. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jason. Okay. Councilmember Guerra on Item 7.
No, thank you very much. I just wanted to thank our staff on Item 7 here. I know we had a lot of conversation earlier in the morning about how important it is to improve our tree canopy, and particularly in South Sacramento and other parts of the city, North Sacramento as well, where we have poor air quality and also the heat island effect. The fact that we're going to be working with Green Latinos as one of the nonprofits to push this and making sure that we're fulfilling the mission of the City of Trees, which, you know, I think should still be the name on the water tower, but that's a different conversation. You know, I just wanted to thank staff for all their work and everybody involved in this. So thank you, Vice Mayor.
All right. Councilmember Vang on Item 7.
Thanks, Mayor. Mayor, mayor sounds great, too. Vice Mayor, Chair. Yeah, definitely wanted to just echo Councilmember Guerra and really actually want to take this time to thank the staff that made this happen, Rachel and Lucinda, but specifically Rachel. I know last year, originally, the request was to apply for $5 million, and we received $1 million. And these dollars actually, according to the scope of work, is really for tree planting, irrigation system upgrades, but really for education around tree care and planting in underserved communities, under canopy communities. And so I am proud to support this item, but do want to provide a direction to this item in particular. I know in the Racial Equity Committee, we had a conversation about the plan in particular around tree canopy, but would love a report back on these dollars in particular and how we're using an equity lens to ensure that the $1 million, while it may sound a lot, is very minor for the work that we need to do. And so would like to, if Rachel, if possible, whether that's a memo, to kind of break down how those $1 million, how the $1 million would be spent around tree canopy, which districts, which neighborhoods. And in particular, the water irrigation piece as well. I know I've received several calls from communities in my neighborhoods about planting trees, but public work to say we don't have the water infrastructure. And so now we have a grant, and we can really begin some of that work. And so I wanted to just provide direction for staff to report back, whether that's a memo to Mayor and Council of how those dollars are being spent. Thank you.
Excellent. Well taken. Madam... Okay, got it. Moving on to Councilmember Kaplan on Item 7.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I just want to piggyback on what Councilmember Vang said because I think this is great. While I believe we deserve the $5 million, because we should still be the City of Trees. And we've had a report that says in order to meet our shade canopy requirements, we need to plant 25,000 trees on an annual basis, which kind of is audacious and a lot, but I know every little grant helps. But one of the things I want included on the memo as we look at, like, no offense, I really think this is great, but when you look at the breakdown, I have concerns that it's going to cost $100,000 for a parking lot shading guidebook, which I think we already kind of have in our general plan and our Parks Plan and what we've got with. So just concerned with that it would take $100,000 for that and then $100,000 to facilitate private development compliance with the city's shading ordinance because currently, in this project, we're scheduled to plant only 500 trees over two years. I know the city, we asked, we planted 850 trees last year. We're supposed to plant 25,000 trees to meet our shade canopy, and that a million-dollar grant, we only are putting enough money to plant 500 trees? When we're talking about urban forest and equity lens, like, that... I'm just concerned about where some of the money, where I think the education is great, the parking lot, redoing some of the shading, the upgrade of Miller Park, that funding, great, but like, why it would cost $100,000 for some guidebooks where I think the money could be potentially better used in planting more trees? I just want to understand that, and if that's the case, and I've misunderstood, to be educated on that. But having this grant only cover the planting of 500 trees, it's great, good start, but I was hopeful to see a little bit more than that since we do have a pretty audacious just goal for accomplishing. Yes?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I was just going to add, I believe there's an actual, like, tree canopy plan that's going to come to the Mayor and Council end of the year. And so that plan, hopefully, we will have a larger conversation around funding to support our tree canopy. That was a conversation we had at the last Racial Equity Committee, which I don't believe you were able to make it. Yeah, because you were out. Yeah, no worries. So I do believe the item is coming back to Racial Equity Committee to talk about potential dollars, like, most of our dollars that support our tree canopy and water irrigation is actually from our lighting district. And we're going to actually have a conversation about how we're currently spending those dollars, and can we make adjustment that's within our legal restrictions to figure out from equity lens, how can we reallocate those dollars? And so $1 million, this is one grant. This is a small part of a larger conversation of how we should support our tree canopies. And so I just wanted to share that. And that should become in the Mayor and Council the end of the year, and that's what I'm hoping for, for full dialogue about how we should be spending those dollars in underserved neighborhoods.
Which I think is...
Urban forestry plan.
Yeah. Which I think is great. That's why I was confused for the $100,000 for a guidebook, considering we already have that coming to Council, which may cover what the plan is. But I think it deserves, like, a larger conversation. Are we duplicating things? And maybe it frees up some of the grant money for something else. But I just want to thank everybody who worked on this because it is a grant, and it is a start. But just making sure that we're maximizing the dollars in a way that really is trying to accomplish planting more trees. Because, you know, while my district is new, we have the least amount of shade canopy because of all the lack of age of a lot of our trees. So thank you.
Okay. Well, that's a direction well taken. So we'll look forward to including that direction for a report back on the equity lens around this grant. And then also looking forward to a larger conversation on our urban tree canopy. So thank you for that. And then Councilmember Kaplan on Item 12.
Thank you again, Vice Mayor. I just want...
I'm so sorry. I missed Councilmember Valenzuela on my own note.
I was all ready to go.
Please, Item 7. No, thank you for letting me know. I cannot read my own handwriting, folks.
Before we moved on, and it's brief, just to express some sincere gratitude to our Senator, Senator Ashby, for this money for security enhancements at Alder Grove. Y'all heard me mention the shooting that happened last month. Thankfully, the little girl is going to survive against all odds. She's a true fighter. But it really is endemic of some environmental issues we have over there. I mean, it's deeper issues, gun violence, but having improved lighting, having some cameras is really just going to help deter some of the activity that's unfortunately taken root in this part of my district. And so I guess I just wanted to say, send a, you know, thanks to Senator Ashby's team, if they're watching, for making this happen so quickly. I mean, she called me that next week and said, hey, I think we can make something happen for the community, which is just incredible. And really want to also thank the city manager's team for moving this quickly. I saw it on the agenda and told S.H.R.A., and they said, wow, we thought that would be months away. So thank you for making this come so quickly. We're really excited to get those improvements in so that we can make the community a little bit safer. So thank you.
A great point. Thank you. Okay, no. Councilmember Kaplan, Item 12. Thank you.
Thanks, Vice Mayor. So Item 12, I just want to thank everybody that is entering to the Sacramento Transportation Adaptation Plan. I think it's crucial in the outreach that we're doing, really, as we look at our bus stops, what can we do to protect from heat and rain and making our bus stops as safe as possible? And part of this contract is to go out and talk to the community about how we address the barriers and make these safe places. I know this is a multi-year process. I would just like to invite everybody out to District 1 and our farmer's market. District 1 has kind of the limited transportation with SACRT. We don't have a lot. But one of the things we do have in the bus stops, we have, they're in 100% hot, high-temperature areas that our young children tend to lose and that we don't lose the filter and that the equity is needed in North Natomas to have, you know, safe places for our kids to stand that also address climate change as we move forward. So I really look forward to talking about how we can address the barriers of equity and having safe stops for all of our children and how this project aligns with climate and transportation plans we're adopting in the City of Sacramento.
Absolutely. Important issues. And Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comment on the consent calendar?
Yes, Vice Mayor, I have one speaker, Ryan Misano, on Item Number 2.
So I think, let's see, Number 2, you're talking about... Global ends policy. So the City of Sacramento, if you walk out the front doors of your chamber, needs a lot of work. So does California, so does America. So we don't need to be focusing on global initiatives. We don't need to be focusing on Israel. We need to be focusing on Sacramento, crime and all of that. And Ms. Milstein, I don't know why you're up there.
Excuse me, please do not address our staff.
Excuse me, don't tell me what to say.
You can address the full council.
Excuse me, don't tell me what to say.
You can address the full council.
Excuse me, don't tell me what to say. So we need to understand that you're a puppet, and we are...
It's your point.
It's true, you're a puppet, too. All of you up there are puppets.
Please keep your comments germane to city business.
It is germane to city business. You're all puppets, including you. You're the longest-serving puppet, 20 years. It's a big joke. It's a big circus every single time. Your Sacramento Bee, your television stations, it's a big joke.
Please keep your comments related to city business.
I don't know why you waste your time. You've already lost. So anyways, as I was saying before, I was rudely interrupted by a puppet. We have a problem with this globalist agenda, which is related to the UN, which was begun, actually, in 1919, when after World War I started, they tried to pass the League of Nations and failed. And before World War II ended, they had the United Nations in place. And we're still marching towards this globalist agenda, and you're an anti-Semi if you say who's behind it. It's ridiculous. But it is going to come to a stop because more people are waking up. And I'll be back up here for more.
All right. So I am ready to entertain a motion on the consent calendar with the addition of continuing Item 11 for one week. All right. Do I have a second? And a second? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, Dr. Epstein? That passes unanimously. Moving on to Item 20, our Parks Plan 2040. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Vice Mayor, City Council members. My name is Jason Wiseman. I'm the Park Planning and Development Manager for the Department of Youth, Parks, and Community Enrichment. I'm here today with our senior planner, Dana Repan, to present the Parks Plan 2040. We're excited to finally be at this point. There's been a lot of community input. So I'd just like to take a moment to thank the community members and the youth that have provided input on the plan to get us to this point. I'd also like to say... I'd also like to stop and thank our director, Jackie Beecham, for her leadership and guidance to this long-term vision for the department. And then a special thank you to Dana and our consultant, MIG, that have spent years collecting the data, analyzing and collaborating with community and other departments to ensure this plan represents the city's diverse community. So this afternoon, we're seeking your support for the adoption of the plan and looking forward to the next steps. And with that, I'll hand it over to Dana for presentation on the Parks Plan 2040. And we will be available for any questions after the presentation.
Thank you, Jason. And thank you, Vice Mayor, council members. We have arrived at this final step in the update to the department's park and recreation Parks Plan. I'd like to take a few minutes to provide a recap of the development of the Parks Plan, highlight key aspects of the document with plan recommendations, and discuss the next steps. So what is the Parks Plan 2040? In 2019, the department set out to update the 2005 Parks and Recreation Master Plan, which we now call the Parks Plan 2040. Since this is a department-wide plan, the objective of the update was to reflect the changes in the department, its core values, mission, and goals, as adopted with the department's 2018 strategic plan. The plan was developed to document the existing assets of the park and recreation system, including programs and resources. With robust community engagement, the plan was to reflect the community needs and priorities as well, then send out an equitable and feasible investment strategy for the next 20 years. As a subsequent project of the city's adopted 2040 general plan update, the plan development corresponded with the general plan's update process and schedule. The Parks Plan is guided by the overarching goals and policies of the general plan, including the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan, the Age-Friendly Community Action Plan, and the Urban Forest Plan. It also builds upon previous plans and initiatives from the department. The four-phase approach to plan development included extensive public engagement, diverse community outreach, and advisory feedback with frequent check-ins at each phase. Through the different activities, events, and surveys, we wanted to engage with careholders, youth-to-older adults, and many communities throughout the city. We heard from thousands of people who expressed their diverse insights into the needs, preferences, and priorities for Sacramento's park and recreation system. An achievement we are proud of that came out of the community engagement strategy is the Parks Plan 2040 Youth Outreach Program. It earned the city the 2021 California Park and Recreation Society's Marketing and Communications Award of Excellence. I would like to highlight key aspects of the Parks Plan and recommendations for plan The Parks Plan documents the city's inventory of existing parks and facilities to set a baseline for the analysis. With over 230 parks covering over 4,300 acres of parkland, the parks vary by classification, size, levels of development, distribution in the city, and types of facilities and amenities they provide. Regional Parks comes in at over 1,600 acres compared to neighborhood parks at 450 acres, serving all of Sacramento. With this baseline inventory completed, we conducted a spatial analysis of a 10-minute walk from residential areas to the nearest public park. The 10-minute walk metric is an equitable way to look at access. We found 84% of Sacramento residents live within a 10-minute walk from a park. While 45 future parks are already planned to serve new residential developments, as depicted in blue, it still leaves about 16% of residents who do not have a park nearby. They are called gap areas. A majority of these gap areas are considered vulnerable due to socioeconomic and environmental factors, as depicted in orange and red. The plan recommends an estimated 66 new parks are needed in existing neighborhoods throughout the city. And with that, the plan calls for a change in the investment strategy to address equity-based park needs. Parkland level of service is a metric used to determine the amount of parkland per resident. It helps us set our park impact fees and Quimby land acquisition goals. Using the general plan's 2018 population numbers, with 2024 park acreage counts, the city provides 9.16 acres of parkland per 1,000 residents. Whereas our previous Parks and Recreation Master Plan had a level of service goal of 13 acres per 1,000, we have not been able to meet that goal citywide. We want to protect the precious land that we have now and grow sustainably as the population reaches the 2040 estimates, while balancing out the increased pressure of our system, environmental changes, rising replacement costs, deferred maintenance, and public priorities. The plan recommends an equitable... I'm going to go back to this last slide, sorry. The plan recommends an equitable rightsizing of the level of service by shifting the emphasis on the acquisition of large tracts of parkland, like regional parks, to an emphasis on acquiring more close-to-home parks, neighborhood and community parkland. This reduces the level of service to 8.5 acres per 1,000. Even with this reduction, we estimate that the city will need over 1,000 acres of parkland on top of the existing 4,300 acres of parkland we currently provide. The acreage includes the future parks in the pipeline and the 66 new parks needed in gap areas. We also took an inventory of our existing type and number of facilities. To estimate the type and number of facilities needed by 2040, we considered the needs and priorities of our diverse communities, factoring our current number of facilities, cost to build and operate these facilities, and industry standards. The main changes are adding more neighborhood and community-serving facilities, such as playgrounds, splash pads, sports facilities, while maintaining the larger facilities found in regional parks, such as community centers, golf courses, and pools. The plan's recommended guidelines allow for flexibility as to the exact number and locations of facilities, factoring in community preferences, and the funds available to build and maintain A baseline maintenance level of service has been established for all developed and undeveloped parklands. The department tries to balance the maintenance needs throughout the system. However, as the city grows and acquires more parkland, installs new facilities and makes improvements, it adds pressure to the limited park maintenance resources. While the baseline provides an equal level of service across all parks, the Parks Plan recommends a more equitable approach to park maintenance and recommends dedicated funding The plan also inventories the many programs that the department provides, such as camps, activities, events, social services. These programs support youth well-being, lifelong recreation, enrichment, and community cohesiveness. New recreation trends, changing demographics, and the desire for more inclusive, culturally responsive, and health-focused programs will affect our programs and services over the next 20 years. So the Parks Plan recommends dedicated funding sources to provide and expand and diversify the range of programs for all ages and abilities. Major themes and commonalities emerge from the technical analysis and community engagement, the needs for increased safety, maintenance, health and wellness, accessibility, sustainability, and connections to nature, which were the foundation for the development of new standards, guidelines, policies, and implementation actions. Nine key directions are the focus areas of these themes and call for the strategic use of the department's resources to implement the plan's recommendations. They each include multiple priority actions with corresponding policies and guidelines to support these actions. The policies that were developed help direct the department in the provision of parks, facilities, programs, maintenance, and investment. And the development and renovation guidelines provide guidance for park acquisition, size, distribution, design, development, and renovation of each park type. What's important to call out here is that the Parks Plan does not analyze all of the city's park-specific plans. It makes recommendations to guide for the type and levels of development of these facilities with some flexibility. The implementation process is built upon the general plan's vision for the city and the department's core values, includes specific actions to take within the short to long term for a new investment strategy, including a park project programming guide update and review of opportunities. New and revised tools to help the department implement the strategy have been identified, and these tools will help the city make decisions through a standardized process with a sustainability and equity lens. The draft Parks Plan was released for public comment from March 8 through April 8. During that time, the Parks Project Team met with 10 legislative bodies, connected with community-based organizations and neighborhood associations, and attended events to share the survey flyer. We received close to 200 comments and responded by revising the draft Parks Plan with technical edits, adding new actions for the key directions, adjusting the level of service and editing policies, replacement of images, and updating the park acreages and maps through an amendment. The final draft Parks Plan with these integrated revisions is available online with executive summaries in English and Spanish. Today, we're asking for your approval and adoption of the final Parks Plan 2040 as a subsequent project under the 2040 general plan and an implementation action of the department's 2018 strategic plan. Once approved, staff will then take the next steps to implement the Parks Plan as funding is provided, specifically with the PIF Nexus Study and Quimby Average Land Value Update to correspond with the revised level of service goal. Today, I want to thank you all and extend my gratitude for the years of support, especially to the mayor, who's not here today, Vice Mayor, council members, the Parks and Community Enrichment Commissioners, Sacramento Youth Commissioners, our director, Jackie Beecham, and the executive team, the Park Planning and Development Services Division, and our consultant, MIG, our technical advisory, our outreach advisory, and our youth advisory committee members, the many organizations and park advocates and careholders who provided their input, and finally, to my park project team, past and present, Raymond Costantino, Brianna Molland, Jason Wiseman, and Malavan Flong. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate the thorough presentation and the many years of hard work by so many people. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
Yes, I have one speaker on this item, Joe Flores.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, city council, councilmember Jennings. My name is Joe Flores. I'm the Parks and Community Enrichment Commissioner for District 7, and I'm here in favor of the Parks Plan 2040. I also wanted to be here on this important milestone day where you accept this plan. As a commissioner, I've had the unique opportunity to be a part of this plan since its inception and earlier this year when the plan was released, then to be able to have those conversations and liaising with my District 7 neighbors and other city advocates at large. I'm also here, I just wanted to highlight Dana and her team. I love that thank you slide that she put up there. The team being flexible, fluid, I know it takes many countless hours and blood, sweat, and tears and bandwidth to produce a document like this for over many multiple years. As a public servant myself, I know what it takes to produce a said document that then gets released out into the public and then have all the comments out there. And then Dana and her team made it easy while liaising with the community because I literally took her words. And when people ask, hey, what about this document? And I was like, you know, if you take it from the perspective of like amenities, amenities is not just in any one particular area, it's in multiple chapters. So amenities, we can list them all day long, but then we also have to list where the proximities of those amenities are and the design of the amenities and then the gaps, as Dana said, where more amenities need to be done, right? It highlighted in some of those red heat maps. So if you look, and so it was my job to frame it in that sense, and then the chapters read beautifully from there. So, again, city council, I'm in favor of this Parks Plan, also support you accepting this plan. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think really incredible, I think it also speaks volumes to the work by the team that, you know, normally we'll have quite a few folks that want to have nitpicks here and there, and I think it just shows the amount of hard work that you put in engaging with community and making sure that everybody's voice was heard. So I just really want to appreciate you for that. And with that, we'll move on to comments from my colleagues. Councilmember Gare.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. Again, thank you. Also, I want to send a special thank you to my also Parks Commissioner, Victoria Vasquez, who has kept me in the loop on this for a good while as well. And also to thank our city park staff. And, you know, Jason, you know, thank you. I know you, you know, you live in the neighborhood and so not only are you, you know, serving us in the city and every part of the city, but you're consumers well. I'm a consumer of our park system. And so we really appreciate, you know, the forethought about how many of our park staff, from maintenance to planning, live and are involved in this. And it's one of our largest area of assets. And so first, again, this is a monumental task. I want to thank everyone for getting to this point and also getting to also some key directions here. So, and so I'm going to focus, I guess, on a couple of those. One, key direction number seven, very, very thankful for, you know, promoting urban cooling. And if you don't mind, I'd like to see if we could put that map again where we had the distance for when it takes longer to, 10 minutes or longer to get to a park. Because I think that's an important conversation piece that we need to be thinking through about access to parks, access to open space, and use this as a conversation piece. So, I mean, clearly you could see here that both District 6, 2, parts of 5, and 8 are areas where it takes you at least, if not longer, to get to walk to a park. When we look at air pollution, it's no surprise that the state has recognized both the South area around Fruit Ridge Finger as a community air protection zone, an area where we have some of the worst air quality in the region, and also in North SAC along Business 80, we have some of the worst air protection zones. So when I think about what the Park Plan and what this document and what we need to be doing is focusing on that issue of urban cooling, because when temperatures rise and we don't have a large tree canopy, then the ozone in the summertime is much more present and prevalent, which means it's difficult to breathe. And for kids in that area, you have issues with lung development at a very young age, with seniors, you have an issue about being able to breathe as well, and so walkability becomes an issue in that area. And so my concern here comes to one of the recommendations from MIG, which was one of the partners we thanked on that big list here, said, recommended a different level of service. And some of the parks in there, when I go over there, have very little trees. And I worry about the fact that we're going to be moving with a document that has a lower level of service. And I'm assuming that that's partly reasons that the staff put together about what we can fund in maintenance now. But this plan is being put together now for our approval so we can look at our budget for next year. And if our maintenance plan is, if we set a lower standard, then when we come to have this difficult conversation that we'll have a deficit next year, then in essence, we're, in my opinion, I feel we're putting ourselves in a position that we're going to only exacerbate the health impacts that are happening to both the south end of the district and the north end of the city. So maybe you could discuss a little bit about the level of service in that area, because if we are going to be true to one of the key directions, I think what's missing in direction number seven is a direct requirement for the Parks Department to replace fallen trees or broken trees. And that is not, right now, Department of Utilities or Public Works, if a tree under their jurisdiction, you know, goes down, we go out and replace it. But in the Parks Plan, if a tree goes down in a park, we don't immediately replace it. Yet that's probably the best place for us to try to- Yet that's probably the best place for us to try to increase the tree canopy. So let me stop there and see if you could respond to a little bit about that, because I do worry about that since we got a nice little letter from the Air District, thank you to the Air District, for highlighting trees and urban cooling.
Yeah, so I mean, touching on the trees, I guess, I mean, we've been working closely with Public Works on the urban forest plan also, which, you know, has many intertwining pieces to it that goes with the Parks Plan too. So, you know, looking at that tree canopy, you know, we didn't want to do, you know, separate efforts or anything. So a lot of the focus on trees even within parks also falls under that urban forest plan. So replacing trees, I mean, obviously is important. It just comes down to a funding mechanism, you know? Where does that funding come from to replace these trees as they get vandalized or they, you know, just don't survive the heat here in Sacramento? We're trying to provide dedicated irrigation for those trees to give them their best chance of survival in parks. So, yeah, I mean, we agree, trees are important, and we want to continue to keep spreading that tree canopy, but it's really a funding issue.
Okay, so maybe to my question more specifically, why not recognize a higher level of maintenance? And let's put the onus on this council to make the decision later on on how we fund that. But why not recognize at least a higher level of maintenance as suggested by MIG?
Yeah, in the plan, there's a standard baseline, which is currently what we're at, and then there's two levels of potential, you know, expansion for higher maintenance levels. Obviously, that requires additional funding to be allocated to those, you know? And then there's two kinds of different maintenance things. There's the general maintenance, which is like the mowing of the turf and emptying the trash and cleaning the restrooms, and then there's the deferred maintenance, which we're looking at, you know, over $100 million of deferred maintenance currently that's not being addressed because it hasn't been, there's no funding for it.
Okay. So, well, then let me, because I don't want to belabor this point here, and I guess I'll go, Madam Vice Mayor, I will move the master plan here, but I'd like to move it with the direction that we come back, at least on the deferred maintenance, when it comes to trees in the tree canopy, because we're talking about a 30-year investment here. When we lose a tree, if it takes us five years for us to get back to it, we're really looking at now 10 to 15 years of loss and canopy in there. So that in itself, and if I quantify the years of health impacts in that amount, now we're starting to add bigger numbers of particulate matter that isn't captured, because even a small tree can capture particulate matter, even if it's not going to be a 30-foot or 40-foot oak or, you know, elm tree. So those are easier ways for us to immediately make health impacts before everybody tries to get an electric vehicle. So I'm going to move the item with that, with that direction, that we come back and look at the deferred maintenance schedule, particularly on the issue of trees in our open space. Another piece, much more localized to District 6, in this plan or in this zone, we've gotten into a conversation about parkways and parks. Parkways are not within the Parks Department. They're in the, so many times, some of them are in Department of Utilities. Parkways like Oke Park and Glenbrook Park, they're in the Parks Department. The parkway that I'm concerned about is the one on 21st Avenue, which is, when I look at this design here, it's right in the middle of one of the orange and red zones. And so to me, it seems to, that more of a reason for us to be thinking about 15 acres that are in that parkway that used to be the old streetcar line that we buried and now created in open space. And the fact that we don't put more energy into the 21st Avenue parkway to make it a place for people to use for, if we're going to be an age-friendly city, it is definitely not a place for, you know, with all the roots that are sticking out or the holes that are out there that can be used for its shade. And the sidewalks on the side of it are not separated sidewalks, so they're in the plain sun. So the only folks who can use the 21st Avenue parkway as a park are those who are able enough to walk and maybe avoid some of the roots that are sticking out. So I'd like to, one, continue to hone on this issue that we have 15 acres in District 6 that was, I think, probably the best use when they unfortunately, regrettably, covered up the old streetcar lines and made it into a parkway. We should be moving and striving to make that into an actual park. So I'm going to stop there. That's more of a commentary, because as you all know, I'm continuing to push on that, that aspect of it. So I'll stop there. Thank you, Vice Mayor, and look forward to coming back and discussing how we address the open space and tree canopy issues in those areas.
Wonderful. Thank you, Councilmember Gera. And just so to clarify, you have a motion with the intention of coming back and having more discussions about deferred maintenance, but the plan would move forward as is. Okay. All right, moving on. Councilmember Kaplan.
Vice Mayor, I will second Councilmember Gera's motion, because I guess tonight I'm going to talk about a lot of trees and canopies. And I apologize, I might be a little verbose, because you know how my staff and I like to go through plans. But Jason, Dana, I want to thank you, I want to thank Jackie, park staff, everybody that had a hand in this. Because when we create plans, it's not only a plan of what we have, but where we need to go as a future, and then looking at the gaps, and how do we address those gaps in an equitable way? And I think, Councilmember Gera, you bring up a good point, because I can tell you, I spend a lot of time reading our plans, and this is the city I want to live in. This is when I read our general plan, our Parks Plan, our urban forest plan, you know, our missing middle, I read our plans, that's the city I want to live in. I think one of the things that is a constant is what is our financial gap? How do we fund it? How do we get there? So as part of, you know, looking at tree canopy when you come back, I think it behooves us to look at what do we have, what would this cost, so that we can really start looking at what can we do? Because we can make great plans, but the problem is, is how do we appropriately implement those plans? So first, I want to say thank you. And then I know, and Councilmember Telemontes knows, being District 1, District 3, we are kind of a master-planned community, and we have a CFD that homeowners tax themselves that pays for some of our parks and maintenance. But I want to make it really clear, as we move forward with this, and in the city, we talk about equity, the amount of money homeowners pay doesn't fully cover the cost for maintenance of our parks, even in District 1. So as we look at that gap, that that is something that is mindful, so that we don't end on the bottom of the barrel, just because taxpayers also tax themselves, is how do we look at that? Because that is part of the equity, and how do we maintain with what we have? So I have several themes: safety, tree canopy, wildlife, diversity, community centers, and I also have the pleasure of representing parts of Robla, which are red and orange, and it creates a dichotomy of one part of my district taxes themselves and another part has significant gaps. And I've seen that. So on safety, in the survey that was conducted by the city, 34% of respondents said that safety in the parks is the most pressing concern. So for me, I know that over a four-year period, there were over 200 criminal incidences that were reported at North Natomas Regional Park, and we are constantly, weekly, getting phone calls about, on how sleeping in our bathrooms, needles, and other drug paraphernalia being left there, and how, you know, and I know the city council has emphasized having park rangers, but how does that all work together in priority to address these public safety concerns? Specifically, I'm interested in how Policy 5.15 gets implemented to address knowing that there is a good portion of our respondents, even if we have the parks. If those parks are not safe, then the neighbors are not going to go. And that's what I hear in certain parts of my district. What's the use of a park if the community can't use it? And I do support the emphasis on neighborhood parks. I think it's really important that you have the walkability, smaller areas that may be more manageable, so I am supportive of how you're moving forward with that. I get we all want regional and community parks, but when you look at things, you know, maybe going towards more of a neighborhood emphasis is where we should go. On tree canopy, you already know, while in Natomas, and I love to plant trees, and my goal is to see if we can do 100 this year, what does that maintenance and stewardship look like specifically 4.5 in the Parks Plan? And I think that's what Councilmember Gera and I were talking about, of how can we dig into that a little bit? And understanding, because we've heard about Public Works and their infrastructure needs, but I think it's also addressing where we know that we need more trees. It is a public safety, it is a health, it is so many reasons why we need more tree canopy, what that's going to look like. Note of appreciation, thank you for including wildlife section in our parks when you look at Section 2.17 of Play, Sports, Outdoor, Recreation, and Interpretive Facilities. A good portion of my district is within the Natomas Habitat Basin Conservancy, and we have 22 native plants and species, and I can tell you, I have a community members that have put together a petition that want to see some interpretive signs at the regional park, and I think it would be really cool, educational-wise, to explain why these are protected species and what you find throughout our region, especially the Swainson Hawk and the Gardner Snake. So thank you for that. Diversity, I've said it before, Councilmember Telemontes knows this, you know, Natomas Unified School District is the number one most diverse district in the United, or in California, second in the United States. SAC City, you know, is number three, which encompasses a majority of the city of Sacramento. So we know we live in a very diverse area, and the fact, I think it's very important that we look at that diversity, and we look at how we plan our parks. Is, are our parks addressing the different nature of cultural heritage diversity throughout our communities? I will just say thank you. Jason, we talked a lot about this. The first city cricket pitch was built in Northlake, and can I tell you how wildly popular it is and that earlier this month, they just had their first cricket tournament and brought in teams from the greater Sacramento region for an all-day event? So it is something that is very much appreciated and used within our community, and that is just an example of how we take a look at diversity and the impact our parks can have. So very much thank you for doing that. Community center, I think it's really important that we have our community centers, because we know they just promote our neighborhood and our community. And I get, my district's a little different, and I really just want to say thank you with a pause. You know, North Natomas Aquatic Center, Community Center, I really appreciate YIPSY trying their hardest to bring in events, but it really is an event center, because it is so expensive to rent, and it is vastly prohibitive versus renting a room in community centers throughout the rest of the city doesn't cost that much, and there are several rooms you can rent. And how we look at that and potentially remedy that, that is something I'm hearing a lot in North Natomas. There isn't a, there is a one-off of making it a community center, but it really is an event space that costs thousands of dollars to rent. And then, and I say this because 30% of the population of the city is youth and seniors, and those community centers need some, our teens need those spaces to go to. And then I want to give a plug of support, because my district abuts up to Robla Community Park. There has been planned a clubhouse kind of community space there at Robla for over two decades. That is in a desert area. That is in a disadvantaged area. It shouldn't take two decades to get something planned in an area like that. And so I just want to thank our YIPSY staff for all that they've done, but that is, you know, a priority of something I'm very supportive of, working with my colleague in D2 to make sure that we see that happens, because when you have a regional community park, it deserves to grow what was planned in two decades of not having a bathroom and not having a community space in a disadvantaged neighborhood, is something that I hope to see how we can remedy sooner rather than later. But again, thank you. Thank you for all that you've done. I know I said a lot, but I wanted to add context to everything that you guys and our Parks Department and YIPSY and our commission has done, really means a lot, and I just want to see how do we, how do we create the plan to implement such this is the city that the plan makes it want it to be? So thank you.
Thank you.
Great comments. Thank you. Next up, I have Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you. And I'll pile on with thank yous from our Councilmember Kaplan for all the work that you've done over all this period of time, and especially also to Director Beecham for the incredible job of making this happen. My plan was to give the second to this, but it's already been done. So I wanted to ask the clerk, if this is a public hearing, should we not open and close it? And so I will do that part, since I don't think that part was done. So I will, that's okay. So I will open and close the public hearing, and I'll be the third vote in there. But I just wanted to let you know that the 2040 Parks Plan that I read is consistent with the 2040 General Plan, and its guiding principles, and the plan is well thought out, and I think it's a great plan for the day and for the future. And I just wanted to let you know that I felt that very strongly. I really, too, want to talk about the tree canopy and the deferred maintenance. I want to talk about that, as my colleague has said, he wants to talk about that. But I just wanted to let you know that I really appreciate that you're applying the Sacramento Equity Explorer Design Tool in scoring priority projects. That's important, and I think, you know, if we keep doing that, it will have many benefits. And also, just something that I've been working on since I've been on the council, is the trail connections and the fact that we are collaborating with departments and with the county in order to make sure that those trail connections come forward, so that we have the ability to not only sit on a porch and have neighbors that we can talk to, but we can ride through a trail and connect to a whole nother community. So it's just an extension of a porch, if you can visualize that in your mind. So just great job on that as well. So I just wanted to let you know, I thought this was an incredible job well done. Just wanted to thank you for your efforts.
Thank you.
Excellent thoughts. All right, and then moving on, Councilmember Tao.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Just want to echo my colleagues to say, you know, thank you for staff for a job well done. I read through the general plan for Parks Plan for 2040, and, you know, I'm excited to see the direction that it's going, you know, especially incorporating what Councilmember Jennings said, the seed equity piece to really look at projects and judging that. You look at the map that was shown earlier, you know, my district is mostly in red when it comes to parks, so there's a, you know, my community is old. It is not that the city Parks Departments aren't doing a great job in the area, but my district is, you know, master, not master plan, but planned 100 years ago. And, you know, I think, you know, moving forward, the discussion should be looking at how do we activate, you know, spaces within our district that's vacant, but include that within parks so that a community has access to neighborhood parks as well? Because certain neighborhoods, you know, we lack access to a nearby park as well. But then I think Councilmember Gera's point of looking at the regional trails as well, you know, we have Sacramento Northern, Sacramento Back Trail that goes through all of my district that can be used as regional parks in the future, as well as more shade canopies, trees, and playgrounds for the area as well. And then if you look at, one of the areas is our Robla area, right? We have four community centers in our district, but it's heavily underutilized. And then we have certain areas that are newer and are seeking a clubhouse, and they've been, Councilmember Kaplan mentioned it, working on it for 20 years, and, you know, how do we conceptualize, visualize that within the city so that we get ACIP or we get a Robla Park Phase 5? You know, I think we have a Phase 4 working now for the bathrooms, but how do we get to that Robla Park Phase 5 and look at gap funding or something? But then I do believe this plan will allow us to do that with the equity piece, and that is why I say staff has done such a great job with it. piece and that is why I say staff has done such a great job with the 2040 General Parks Plan. And so, I would just like to thank Director Beecham and the whole staff for this plan.
Thank you.
Excellent. Mayor Potem Telemontes.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you so much to you and your team for all your work on this, all the outreach, the designs, the drawings that kids submitted. I mean, you guys really went above and beyond to make sure that the community heard from you and that we were able to submit comments and feedback. And I think I had like five briefings on this and each single time I was like, hey, did you incorporate feedback from our community? So, really do appreciate your, your work on this. We have a desperate need for more parks, more community center hours, more staffing, and as we all know, a very limited budget. And I know that that's one of the biggest challenges that you and, I mean, the city of Sacramento currently face. So, I am very just cognizant of that as we move forward. I think it's like, we have a great ambitious plan, but we also have no funding that's attached to it. So, it's important for people to recognize the circumstances that, that we're dealing with here. I do believe that our parks and our green spaces are one of the few places that are free and open to all people regardless of age, race, income and more. You know, many times people with higher incomes get to go to Disneyland, go to Mozak, go to different places. And here, our community centers and our parks is where people go for a safe, fun time with their families, to do picnics. And that's somewhere where I grew up. I spent a lot of time at Jensen Park in Willis, California. And so, I do believe that these programs are vital to mental health and physical well-being. So, you know, but as we know, we have inequities and our city of Sacramento Parks Dashboard shows that. And these inequities are in spaces and that people, you know, can't travel to. If we have regional amenities, that's wonderful, but it's important that people don't, don't have access to transportation, have the ability to access it and for what cost. And so, that's something to keep in mind as we move forward. We got to make sure that it's accessible. This summer, we bought a lot of passes so that we can take kids to the North Natomas Aquatics Facility, and we distributed them to the community in South Natomas. And we said, hey, you can use this pass, you can go there, go there for free. And the excitement on the kids' faces was just wonderful to see. We do have inequities on North Gate Corridor. We have three schools and one park despite being two miles long. And our North Gate Park right now has been missing a door for the last few years. And I know that you and your team are really hard at work on it and it's taken some time because of your workload. So, I do want to acknowledge that. And, you know, that's an issue that's happening across the city. As we have funds that become available for the city of Sacramento, I think it's really important to really use that equity dashboard and see where those funds need to be allocated. And as every single contract comes into the city of Sacramento, we on this dais need to be really mindful of that. Last week, I did a tour of District Two with Councilmember Chantel, and I really do believe that District Two needs all the love, support and resources from the city of Sacramento. Like, we need to invest millions and millions of dollars into this community to get it up to par with the rest of the districts. And I'm committed to you, our city of Sacramento staff, to use every tool to invest in our parks and our natural resources. So, if that means looking for funding opportunities, seeking letters of recommendation, trying to find private investments, like you have my commitment as a council member to help you on that. And for anyone that's interested, we do have Measure L Funding, which is our Sacramento Children's Fund. And there's about $15 million or so that's currently on hold for our committee and our commission to make recommendations for. But this could be an avenue if someone thinks that parks are the best places for kids to be at, to go to these commission meetings and advocate for those funds to be dedicated in that area. But I do want to thank you for your work on the Niños Parkway. We've invested money into the Parkway to connect South Natomas, so I do want to thank you for that. And we have a contract out and we're going to be able to get a safe pedestrian crossing on San Juan. And I do want to thank you for your work on Bannon Creek. I know it's a really special Parkway for my district and want to thank you and the contractors and the community members that put so much work into it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Potem, and at the risk of sounding redundant, I am also going to thank you. This is a, this is an incredible plan and, you know, it's not often that, one, I don't hear much, but in a good way from, from some constituents, but also our District Five Parks Commissioner was over the moon about this work. And I think that's a testament to everything that you've done. And again, your, your communications with the community, making sure that that gets inputted into the plan is really important. And I also just want to echo, I think, what every single one of my colleagues said around equity, that it's, I, I just really appreciate that focus. And we talk about it a lot and people talk about it all over the state in the U.S. And I'm just looking at us as a city, putting that into action and saying, we're going to have this as part of our plans and our tools. We're going to be thinking about this as we're spending money. We're going to keep it top of mind. And I think that that is just a really important step that, that we have taken and I'm really grateful for it. And of course, you know, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention, of course, I represent an area that really struggles in terms of having access to resources like community centers. And I have some neighborhoods in my district that don't have a park and, and those are challenges, particularly because they tend to be in very low-income areas. But I know that, that we're all committed to that. And I've heard from many of my colleagues that that's an area of focus. And so, I look forward to working on that with you in the years to come. And so, with that, seeing nothing else on this item, do all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed or abstained? That passes unanimously. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor, may I reiterate? Councilmember Jennings opened and closed the public hearing. Councilmember Garrett made the motion and Councilmember Kaplan seconded.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And with that, we are moving on to item 21. And our Madam City Auditor, Interim City Auditor.
Thank you. Hello, Vice Mayor, members of the City Council. I'm Frishter Awari, the Interim City Auditor. With me today is Jordan Sweeney, who is primarily responsible for this project. And I don't know if you can tell, but I'm recovering from being under the weather this weekend. So, I'm actually going to hand it over to Jordan just so I don't have a crazy cough or anything during my presentation.
Feel better.
So, Jordan Sweeney.
Come, Ms. Sweeney.
Good afternoon, mayors and members of the City Council. Jordan Sweeney, Principal Fiscal Policy Analyst with the Office of the City Auditor. The recommendation that is before you is to approve the diversity review of city employment applications, hires and separations from February 1st, 2021 through January 31st, 2024. This is our second time performing this diversity assessment of applicants' hires and separations, and we plan to conduct this type of analysis every three years. The objective of this project was to assess the diversity of city job applicants, hires, employees and separated employees as compared to the diversity of city of Sacramento residents. We reviewed applicants' hires and separations data for a three-year period, picking up where our previous analysis left off. The period for this report is from February 1st, 2021 through January 31st, 2024. We worked with the Human Resources Department to identify hired employees. Our analysis includes new hires, rehires, promotions, transfers, appointments from eligible lists and certain demotions such as voluntary and management appointments. This is a bit different than our, than the analysis we did in our previous report, which only included newly hired employees. The information on this slide is what is included in our analysis. As some applications, especially for executive recruitments and youth aid positions, may not be in the NeoGov data, they were not included in our analysis. For our reporting period, the city received more than 85,000 applications in NeoGov, including more than 60,000 applications for regular full-time positions, nearly 6,000 applications for sworn police and fire positions and nearly 2,800 applications for management positions. These numbers include each time an applicant applied for a city position. Therefore, applicants who applied for multiple positions within the period were counted for each application they submitted. Also during the period, the city had more than 6,800 hires. Please note that our analysis counts individuals for each instance they were newly hired, promoted, transferred, et cetera. Therefore, some individuals are counted multiple times in this analysis. We performed analysis on the entire hire pool as well as separate analysis on new hires and promotions. For employee separations, there were more than 3,500 total separations, including 1,200 regular full-time employee separations, nearly 400 sworn police and fire separations and approximately 100 regular full-time management employee separations. So, this report includes the analysis that we thought would be most interesting for the council, management and the public. However, this data can be sliced and diced in a million other ways. We had mentioned during our presentation to the Budget Audit Committee that we were working on creating dashboards similar to the one that we have for current employee diversity, but for applicants' hires and separations. I want to inform you that we were able to publish these dashboards to our website last month. These dashboards will allow users to conduct more detailed analysis on the data, including trending the data between fiscal years 2019 and 2024. We would like to thank the Human Resources Department, the City Attorney's Office for their collaboration in getting these dashboards developed and published quickly. This slide analyzes the ethnicity race of applicants by fiscal year and compares it to the ethnic racial composition of city residents. A decreasing percentage of the annual applications were submitted by individuals identifying as white and an increasing percentage were individuals identifying as black or African American. About 22% of the annual applications were submitted by individuals identifying as Hispanic or Latino and about 12% were submitted by Asian applicants, while nearly 30% of the city's residents are Hispanic or Latino and more than 16% are Asian. Compared to the previous three-year period in our first analysis of eligible applicants, applicants during the 2021 to 2024 period more closely resembled the demographics of city residents. This slide analyzes the gender of all applicants by fiscal year and compares it to the gender composition of city residents. The percentage of female applicants has decreased since fiscal year 2021. Applicants during the 2021 to 2024 period similarly resemble the demographics of city residents as they did in the previous three-year period. This slide identifies the number of hires during the period by hire type. Nearly half of the hired employees were hired for temporary positions. Additionally, of the 6,816 hires, nearly 3,000 were for part-time positions. Temporary positions are filled on a temporary basis, generally lasting less than 12 months, and part-time positions are those where the work schedule calls for less than the normal eight hours per day. We focused the majority, majority of our hires analysis on the 3,441 regular full-time employees hired between February 1st, 2021 and January 31st, 2024. Employees hired to fill part-time or temporary positions have been removed from the bulk of the analysis. This slide analyzes all hired regular full-time employees' ethnic racial composition by fiscal year and compares it to the ethnic racial composition of city employees and city residents. It appears employees of two or more races are hired at a greater percentage each fiscal year than the current ethnic composition of regular full-time employees. Because our first analysis of hires in the three years prior to this period only contain new hires, we cannot comment on how the ethnic composition of all hires has changed since 2018. However, when looking at new hires only, it appears that the composition of new hires is trending more towards that of city, city residents since 2018. This slide analyzes the ethnic racial composition of regular full-time employees hired during our reporting period by department. Please note that the Office of Public Safety Accountability is included in the Mayor Council line. Hires for youth parks and community enrichment, mayor council, finance and HR appear to most closely resemble that of city residents. This slide analyzes the city's hired regular full-time employees' gender composition by fiscal year hired and compares it to the gender composition of the city employees and city residents. Female employees were generally hired at a greater percentage each fiscal year than the current gender composition of the city's regular full-time employees. This slide analyzes the gender composition of all regular full-time hired employees during our reporting period by department. It appears the youth parks and community enrichment department, along with mayor council, most closely resemble city residents, which is nearly 50/50. This slide analyzes the gender and ethnic racial composition of all police and fire departments' sworn employees hired during the period. We included part-time and temporary employees in the analysis of sworn employees as police officer recruit and fire recruit positions are temporary, but once these employees graduate the academy, they may become regular full-time employees. Our analysis showed that the police department hired females at a greater percentage than female applicants, which was less than 20%, while the fire department hired females at a lower percentage than female applicants, which was less than 5%. When looking at new hires only, percentages of female hires increased from our previous report for both the police and fire departments. Additionally, when looking at new hires only, the ethnic composition of new hires more closely resembles that of city residents than the previous three years. This slide identifies the regular full-time employee separations by fiscal year and ethnicity race and compares it to regular full-time city employees and city residents. As a reminder, fiscal years 2021 and 2024 are partial years in this analysis. Fiscal year 2021 includes February 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022, and fiscal year 2024 includes July 1st, 2023 through January 31st, 2024. Separations during the 2021 to 2024 period similarly resemble the demographics of city residents as they did in the previous three-year period. This slide analyzes the ethnic racial composition of all regular full-time employee separations by reason for separation, with the purple boxes highlighting potential areas of interest. On this slide, we want to focus briefly on the 78% of the employees who were laid off were Hispanic or Latino. During our presentation to the Budget Audit Committee, Councilmember Garrett requested additional information on the high percentage of layoffs that were Hispanic or Latino. The Human Resources Department reviewed the data and determined that the data captures intermittent layoffs the city had each summer in the Department of Youth Parks and Community Enrichment for the START program. As you know, START is a program the city runs that serves the Robla Unified School District. In the past, when the school adjourned for the summer, so did the program. Therefore, both the hires and separations data in this report captured these employees each time they were laid off and then subsequently rehired six to seven weeks later. Beginning in 2023, YIPSY received additional grant funding through the Expanded Learning Opportunities Program to offer summer programs at the Robla Unified School District. START program coordinators now work over the summer providing camps in Robla through these ELOP funds, and they also support the expansion of YIPSY offered summer camp program, programming. YIPSY no longer lays off START employees during the summer period. This slide analyzes all regular full-time employee separations by fiscal year and gender and compares it to the regular full-time city employees and city residents. There was a higher percentage of female employees leaving city employment each fiscal year than the current gender composition of the city's employees. Separations during this period similarly resemble the demographics of city residents as they did in the previous three-year period. This slide identifies the gender and reason for separation of all regular full-time employee separations. Nearly 69% of employees released from probation and more than 76% of employees released from city service were male. Males also made up nearly 73% of those that retired from the city. This slide identifies the gender and ethnic racial composition of all police and fire departments' sworn employee separations between February 1st, 2021 and January 31st, 2024. Again, we included part-time and temporary employees in the analysis of sworn employees as police officer recruit and fire recruit positions are temporary, but once these employees graduate the academy, they may become regular full-time employees. For the police department, sworn females separated at a lower rate than sworn female hires, which you may recall from a previous slide, was 23.3%. This is similar to the separation rate for the previous three-year period. For the fire department, sworn females separated at a higher rate than sworn female hires, which was 3.9%. However, the separation rate dropped nearly 10 percentage points from the previous three-year This slide analyzes the ethnic racial composition of all city employees as of February 1st, 2021, all applications received in NeoGov between February 1st, 2021 through January 31st, 2024, all employees hired during that timeframe, all employee separations during that timeframe and all city employees as of February 1st, 2124, as well as city residents as of the 2022 American Community Survey. For some ethnic racial categories, the ethnic racial composition of the applicants are not consistent with the ethnic racial composition of city residents. Additionally, for some ethnic racial categories, the ethnic racial composition of the hires are not consistent with the ethnic racial composition of the applicants. However, the current composition of city employees appears to more closely resemble that of city residents than the composition of city employees in 2018. So, this slide analyzes the gender composition of regular full-time city employees as of February 1st, 2021, regular full-time applications received in NeoGov between February 1st, 2021 through January 31st, 2024, regular full-time employees hired during that timeframe, regular full-time employee separations during that timeframe, regular full-time city employees as of February 1st, 2024 and city residents as of the 2022 American Community Survey. Female applicants made up 48.6% of the applicants for regular full-time positions, but they made up only 32.4% of the hired regular full-time employees. The current overall gender composition of city employees appears to have remained The current overall gender composition of city employees appears to have remained the same as the gender composition of city employees in 2018. This slide summarizes our ethnic racial analysis of city applicants' hires and separations. It appears that Hispanic or Latino applicants are the most underrepresented when compared to city residents. This is a similar result to the previous three-year period. It also appears that white employees are hired at a greater rate for regular full-time management positions than other ethnicities in the 2021 to 2024 period. When comparing only new hires to the previous three-year period, it appears that the city has made improvement and new hires generally more closely resemble city residents. And while white employees composed a higher percentage of separated employees in each category, they also composed a higher percentage of hired employees in the city's current employee composition in the 2021 to 2024 period, and this is similar to the 2018 to 2021 period. This slide summarizes our gender analysis of city applicants' hires and separations. For applicants, it appears the gender composition of regular full-time applicants most closely resembles the composition of city residents. Where we see the most deviation from the composition of city residents is for sworn positions, which appear to have the lowest rates of female hires. However, this period saw some increases in sworn female applicants and an increase in female new hires for sworn police department positions compared to the previous three-year period. Additionally, as previously noted, the fire department experienced a decrease of almost 10 percentage points in female separations over the previous three-year period. This rapport only analyzes the data and highlights some interesting information for the council and management to assess to determine whether the city's various efforts to increase diversity are working. The causes of the highlighted information was not in the scope of this audit and would require a deeper dive to assess. This concludes my presentation, and I am available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate the detailed presentation. With that, well, Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
I have two speakers on this item, Ryan Masano and Julius.
Diversity. For some reason, it's something that's commonly heard of here in America, Sacramento and California, but it's not heard of in Africa, or Israel, or Japan, or China, or South America. Now, why is that? Why is diversity talked about in majority-white countries only? If anyone has half a brain, it leads you to understand that there's a clear agenda underway. When California has shrunk from 90% white to 30% white in 70 years, there's something going on. It's not accidental. The vast majority of people, if you look at the most diverse cities, I looked at, I grew up in Vallejo. The churches in Vallejo are very segregated by choice. People choose to be around people of their own race. That's what they choose to do. Nobody's forcing them to do that. That's with free choice. So by you forcing diversity on people, if you ever tried putting 10 red ants in a black ant colony and see what happens, it's not pretty. So this is what you're trying to do. Now, it works for one group because if you have chaos in the society, they're able to rule effectively. So it's hypocrisy too, because the nation that America gives the most money to is Israel. Israel does not allow you to move there unless you're Jewish, and you can't marry unless you're a Jew, and this is the country that we give the most money to. Lady, if you don't like what I'm saying...
Again, please do not call our staff by name. Address your comments with the full counsel. Thank you.
Let me get something straight with you. If you interrupt me one more time, I'm going to tell you things about yourself that are going to bring you to tears, so I would recommend you don't do it. So, as I was saying...
Please state your point.
Lisa, why don't you...
Sir.
Get right back out, because you obviously can't handle the truth. Yeah, that's like no law whatsoever. You're going to be sued, and you're going to pay the price for it.
Your time is not complete. Comments, your time is complete. Next speaker is Julius.
Whether you agree or disagree with the way diversity is being handled, you have to pay attention to what's going on when it comes to diversity, because it does seem like we are putting minorities over the majority. What do I mean by that? And whether you think it's asinine or not, if you have eyeballs, you can clearly see what's going on. We have an agenda where we're looking at white people as if they're bad, so we have to exclude them in order to include minorities because they can't make it on their own without the government. That's really insulting, especially to, you know, somebody like me who happens to have brown skin, who's told constantly that I'm oppressed because of the white man, when in reality, it's not the white man. It's other people, but you can't say who they are because then you'd be labeled anti-Semitic. There is an agenda, they are pushing it. Like I said, if you have eyeballs, you can actually see it. You can laugh at me, you can smirk, you can do all these things, but if you just take a look, look at TV shows, look at commercials, when's the last time you saw a white family? When's the last time you saw a black family? You see blended all the time. It's a push to program people to, so that no race can actually continue their legacy with their own race. That's why you're constantly seeing Asians with whites, blacks with whites, everybody's mixing and matching things like that. And yet now they want to push that into jobs and say, well, we got to hire a black person because we need representation, we need a black firefighter, we need a woman police officer, and we see the execution of female police officers, they suck. Not all of them, but some of them suck. It's just true. That's why you shouldn't go off of diversity, you should hire based on merit. We need a meritocracy, not this diversity, unless it's diversity of thought.
Vice Mayor, I have no more speakers. All right. With that, we'll move on to council comments, or council comments on this item, so that'll be Councilmember Valenzuela to start.
Thank you, Farishna, and thank you, Jordan, it was right, for your presentation. You did a great job, as usual. I read this with a lot of interest, as I do every year when it gets released, and there were a few points that you covered that I'll briefly repeat, just because they definitely struck me as soon as I read them. The first was that white applicants made up 28.8% of applicants for regular full-time positions but comprised 48% of employees hired for full-time positions. Similarly, that white applicants composed only 36.1% of management applications but composed 61% of those hired for management positions, and that there was a startling number that I personally was just like, oh, man, frustrated by, that only 35% of applicants for management positions were self-identified as female. It's just incredibly striking, the persistent work we have to do. I do want to thank HR, I know I see Shelley in the back there, and her team provided a really thorough response, and I want to recognize that there has been some improvement, and I thank you for getting into the weeds of that, because if you hadn't have really named, because I didn't look so closely at the sworn positions to realize the improvements that PD and Fire have made when it comes to hiring and retaining women, which is something that I think we should celebrate. It's still a small overall number, right, but it's that glimmer of hope that like, hey, more women are staying, like, that's good, and we're doing something that's working, and we can continue to build on, but it definitely points to a lot more work that we have to do. So really appreciate the collaboration that I saw in this between HR and the Auditor's Office, and obviously always the City Attorney's Office in this report, and on these dashboards, they're just super cool. I love that we're making data so much more accessible to the public to be able to really dig into these numbers. Like you said, it can be cut a million different ways. I only did a couple and then got super overwhelmed with how many things I could do and just left it on my screen, but I think it shows that we're moving in a good direction and that we can look at, like, I appreciate HR really analyzing, like, hey, we've done more outreach in these areas, and we think that's why we're seeing these applicant pools become more diverse, and so it gives us some good lessons and some cause and effect. So I just want to thank you all for this report. I know it's not easy, it's a lot, I mean, you looked at thousands and thousands of data points to do this, and you managed to do it in a way that boiled it down for the members of the public to see, so, and I appreciate Councilmember Garrett asking the questions about, was it separations or layoffs that were happening, because that was a great, yeah, you're like, hey, we dug into it, and this is why, and it's like, okay, that's good to know, and also a good opportunity to say, okay, YIPSY, what are we doing with these folks if we're not laying them off every summer so that they can keep their city employment, keep their benefits, and perhaps grow into another position? So I just, and that's all to say, again, many thanks to the women who helped put this together, but also everybody else, just because you're standing here, and just really want to thank you for the dashboards. That was above and beyond, and I know that was an option. You didn't have to do that, I don't think we required you to do that, but I'm just really glad to see this data taking on a new life. So with that, I'm happy to move, I think we're moving this for approval, or, yes, we are, okay, I move approval of this, and thank you again.
A second. All right, we got a motion, a second. Thank you. Councilwoman Garrett.
Thank you very much. I'll, you know, most of my comments I made during Budget Audit, want to thank you again for very good work and for getting back to me when I, when we drove down into the details, and also for the city HR staff on the efforts that we've undertaken to increase our numbers. I also, you know, want to thank those in the, both in the fire department and also local 522 here with the creation of the door program, recognizing the challenges that we do have in that department, and the fact that between that and the single role in the MT program, we're going to be able to find better pathways to make sure that our, every city resident who wants to join our fire department can do so. And also, I wanted to recognize again also Chief Lester, I know she's been involved with this from her time, and he is a, you know, as a captain and now looking at how we hire and create a pathway cadet program that feeds into the police department, because that's also looking at significant changes. So we're getting better and brighter that are coming to the department, and contrary to the ignorant comments made during public comment, everyone who passes the academy, whether it's the fire academy or police academy, meet the standards and probably more rigorous standards that our academies have than any other department. When you look at the graduation of our academy, you have the Sheriff's Department, Folsom, Vacaville, all over the region, they're recruiting from our police academy, and so, you know, wanted to make sure, Vice Mayor, that, you know, those comments ignorantly made at the public comment area were rectified here by talking about how we're actually creating more opportunity because of the efforts we've done here. Lastly, you know, one of the areas that I think we still want to pin down, we saw, well, two points. One, still seeing the number on both the Asian Pacific calendar and the Latino population on applicants much lower. So that to me means that we have an outreach problem or an outreach challenge, and so I want to make sure that we look at why that is. I don't want to presume why that is, but to me, that would be one particular area. And then the second, on the separation side, and we're seeing some of the numbers with female candidates, and when we break down by age, I would wager, and I brought this conversation up, that some of the challenges have to be to, of the issues of access and ability to get childcare. And sometimes it's the men in the household who take separation time to help, but many times it has been our women employees. So I wanted to dive deeper into those numbers, and if HR could follow up on those pieces and how we connect better with our, both the childcare providers and Head Start, some of our applicants might qualify for Head Start, some may not, but I want to figure out how we better partner with CETA and Head Start to address those challenges, if childcare is the issue in maintaining our employment opportunities here. So I'll leave that, and thank you for a great presentation.
Excellent comments, and point well taken on our incredible staff all throughout the city of Sacramento that are qualified for the positions by merit. Move on, moving on to Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Great report. Incredible work. I heard you say something in the beginning about every three years, and I think I know the reason why you say every three years. Would this be the baseline for that three-year program?
So we're looking at doing, repeating this analysis every three years for a couple of reasons. One would be resources within our office. Two, this specific report, because it's over a time period, gives us a larger, you know, chunk of data to analyze, but when we talk about every three years, we're talking about this static report. These dashboards that we've created, we will update that data every year, so there's always going to be current relevant data available for you on our dashboards, and then we will prepare this analysis, which does have a little bit deeper in some areas. For example, separation reason is not in the dashboards, but it is in here, and that's just for some privacy concerns, so we will do that type of analysis every three years.
So as I, as I learn how to use the dashboard a little bit better, do I have the ability to go in and look at it on a more frequent basis?
Yes.
And compare years against each other?
Yep.
Okay, I think that's important. For me, I want to look at it every two years as opposed to every three years, especially when I look at council members who serve on four-year terms. I want them to have two bites at the apple as far as being strategic to either add on to what we're doing right and/or change what we're doing wrong.
Yep. In the dashboards, it's not in three-year chunks, it's in one-year chunks, so you can analyze any year you want.
That helps me tremendously. Thank you.
Thank you, and I want to also pass it over to our Assistant City Manager, Lainey Mills.
Thank you. I just want to thank the Auditor's Office. It was really a partnership and very collegial, and we have come up with some data that I think can be useful to all of our departments, and I really appreciate the opportunity to work on this with you. I want to thank the HR Department, Ebony Heaven especially, for her work on the response that Councilmember Valenzuela referred to. If you haven't read it, I encourage you to do that. It outlines kind of the breadth and depth of initiatives that we've taken on in the last five years, and to applaud our department for what they have done in training and building capacity coming up to speed to ensure that we are offering the most opportunity to everybody who applies to the city, and to make sure we're getting more applicants in the door. And I especially want to thank Jordan for her work on the dashboards. She threw it together so unbelievably quickly, and then she said, should we wait till we go to council to throw them up? And we were all like, no, put them up now! And just the speed and attention to detail was really great, so many thanks all around.
Excellent. And, you know, also, you know, want to give thanks to you, Lainey, for all your work as well on this, on this in general, but on your focus on diversity and equity in the city, it doesn't go unnoticed, and I know that your leadership helps drive along all the different departments, so just want to thank you and the team. Thank you so much for this report, and looking forward to moving along. So with that, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? All right, that passes unanimously. Congratulations, and thank you. Okay. Now, colleagues, let us move on to our council comments, ideas, questions, and AV12, 3, 4 reports. Start with Councilmember Bang.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Just want to let folks know that tomorrow is another listening session with the Sacramento Racial Equity Alliance happening at the Pennell Community Center from 6 to 8 o'clock. Childcare and dinner will be provided, SACRT rides as well, and for every resident that participates, they will also get a $25 gift card, so really encouraging folks to come out. I believe this is one of the very last sessions, so encourage folks to come out to that. And then we have our Fourth Annual South Sacramento Festival happening this Saturday at Valley High Park. We're going to give, have a backpack giveaway, and we're going to have different performances from different cultural groups, food trucks, live music, and just lots of activities for our babies, youth, and families, so encouraging folks to come out to that. Again, that's this Saturday, 11 to 3 at Valley High Park. It is our Fourth Annual South Sacramento Festival. And then I also just wanted to share that next Monday, I am co-hosting a community meeting with my commissioner from the Sacramento Children's Fund Oversight Committee. This Thursday, the commission is set to vote on their final recommendation on the five-year strategic plan and their recommendation, which is coming to the mayor and council in September, and since the commission is taking a vote this Thursday, I thought it was important to have a community meeting in my district to kind of share what the commission's recommendations are, and that's happening on Monday at the Pennell Community Center. Dinner will be provided, and so encouraging folks to come out to that. And then, as you all know, every Sunday, we have our Medview Farmers Market all year around. It's not just seasonal, but all year around from 8 to 12 o'clock at the Medview Light Rail Station, so encouraging folks to come to that. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Moving on to Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I told you last week that I was on my way to Texas, McKinney, Texas, and Austin, Texas, to look at the homeless programs that they have there that had been determined to be best practices, and I did go on that trip this past weekend, and I will develop a white paper to pass out to each of you so that you can see the wonderful things that they're doing with tiny homes and canister homes and how they're building a community that includes a lot of the needs of the homeless. building a community that includes a lot of the needs of the homeless. And so I just want to make sure that that information gets to each and every one of you so that we can look at what we might be able to take from them to bring to Sacramento. So that's one announcement. Second one is Music in the Park, which is taking place at Curtis Park. It's going to take place on Sunday, August 25th. For the third and final Music in the Park, it's a free concert, and it takes place at Curtis Park from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. I'll be sponsoring the free space, face painting for the kids. If you think you're a kid, and you can, if you want to get your face painted regardless as to whether you're a kid or an adult, I'll take care of that. It's going to be from an organization called Behind the Scenes Face Painting, so bring out the entire family and enjoy the music, the food, and all the incredible activities that are going to take place. Temperature should be cooler, and there will be a variety of foods and, and food trucks. So bring your chairs and picnic blankets, and enjoy a beautiful evening along with neighbors and friends, and enjoy a great night. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Jennings, and I'm really looking forward to that white paper. Interested in reading that and learning about your experience there, but also would recommend, if you haven't thought of it already, to share it with Lisa Bates of Sacramento Steps Forward, as well as our county partners. Maybe it can be an agenda discussion item for our next four-by-two meeting. Thank you so much for doing that. Okay, moving on to Councilmember Tao.
Just two announcements. Thank you, Vice Mayor. This Saturday, join a Place to Nurture, a local CBO that supports seniors 55 and older in District 2, for their senior Soul Train Disco Boogie and Bell Bottoms at the Robinson Center, 3525 Norwood Avenue. It's a night of disco dancing, live music, and to support seniors 55 and over in District 2. Second event is another cleanup in the district hosted by River City Waterway Alliance. They've done an awesome job cleaning up our creeks, especially Arcade Creek, Stillhead Creek, and Robla Creek. This week, they will be at Arcade Creek on the Norwood Bridge. That is the bridge between Fairbanks and Norwood Avenue. Join them for a community, bring gloves, reusable water, bring water, bring closed-toe shoes, and a can-do attitude, because they go into the creeks and clean up a lot of junk and debris, heavy junk and debris. And so we are looking for volunteers. We will be meeting at 8:30. They will be meeting at 8:30 to 11:30 a.m.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Moving on to Councilmember Kaplan.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We have our Westlake Food Truck Mania tomorrow. We're gonna have Bella Familia Wood Fired Pizza, Smoking EU Barbecue, Drew Skis, Bangin' Bowls, and Mini Donut Shack. So come out for some music, community gathering, and fun. And then Saturday, it still is our One Natomas Farmers Market will be 8:30 to 12:30. Free yoga, 9 to 10. This will go on every Saturday through the end of September. And then Saturday afternoon, from noon to 6:00, come out to the North Natomas Community Center. It is the Natomas Tean, Annual Tean, which is a festival celebrated by women throughout India on the onset of monsoon season with interpretive dance. I do not speak Punjabi, but I can tell you, I can get up and dance and enjoy. It is a wonderful celebration of life, women, and the Punjabi culture.
Fabulous. Mayor Protem Talamontes.
Great announcement for Natomas Tean. It's a lovely event. Tomorrow, we are having our community meeting to go over the Topgolf location, renderings, questions and answers from 5:30 to 7:30 at Venture Office Now. So looking forward to joining the community in this exciting announcement. And then on Saturday, we are celebrating the 30th anniversary of the South Natomas Library, so please join us. And we're also doing a park cleanup at Peregrine Park, so if you are interested, please let me know. Thank you.
Wonderful. Okay, any other council comments or questions? I'll just have a quick, a quick direction, and then three announcements. So I'm hoping, Madam Assistant City Manager, that we can have staff put together, you know, a finance plan and a management agreement for the project on 13th and Stockton Boulevard. As some of you may know, this is a brownfield location where there is some contamination and might not otherwise be developable. So just really interested to see how we can work with those folks and maybe make something happen there. As for announcements, on Friday, August 23rd, we have our South Sacramento Family Success Fair. So that'll be from 10:30 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the Fruit Ridge Community Collaborative in Oak Park. This is in partnership with the Central Labor Council, the Center for Workers' Rights, and Ring of Democracy, as well as our office. I'm really excited. So we're having a bunch of apprenticeship programs there. We have people who are hiring, community resources, our nonprofit partners, food trucks, free childcare for attendees, and breakout workshops throughout the day. So if you get a chance, please do come by and check it out. On Septem, Saturday, September 7th, we're doing our Airport Little League Senior League Anniversary Event. So this is really exciting. I invite you all to come and join me, as well as the community. That'll be at 10 a.m. at the Airport Little League Field, which is right next to the Sacramento Executive Airport. More than 50 years ago, the Airport Little League Senior League won the Little League World Series. There's actually a big sign up there, and it was a really, really big deal. It still is. And so we're actually going to be honoring some of those athletes in their adulthood now, and I'm really excited about it, so please do come by. And lastly, on Friday, September 13th, we are going to be hosting the Hollywood Park Movie Night and Ice Cream Social. So that's going to take place at Hollywood Park Elementary. We're gonna have ice cream, of course, fresh popcorn, and then we are gonna watch Disney Hit Coco. So please come and join us. That will be at sundown, which will be around 7:30 p.m. So join us there. And I realize that I skipped you, Councilmember McGee.
Oh, no, I, I wanted to support in the request on the 13th Avenue property to make sure that we look at addressing that brownfield location. It's, I remember that, that place has been a problem for many years, and we just spent a good amount of money getting a nice new crosswalk, thanks to Department of Transportation or active transportation team. And so it'd be nice to have that great amenity there. And also, wanted to, on top of that, Assistant City Manager, I'd like to make sure that we're moving forward on a joint development agreement for the Stockton Boulevard property further south. We're going to be meeting with our congressional partners on that infill site that also has had contamination, and we want to clean that up again. And finally, just to invite everyone out to the ribbon-cutting and grand opening of chai over on 65th and Broadway. The new, the new tea coffee restaurant, I guess you want to call it chai, but come and get some chai on Saturday. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Really exciting stuff, and thanks for supporting, for supporting that at Stockton Boulevard. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comment on items not on the agenda?
Yes, Vice Mayor, I have 14 speakers, so I will read a few names off. Guy Stevenson, Jeffrey Tardagia, Patty Shaw, Robert Copeland. Mr. Stevenson?
I appreciate the city council and the mayor to recognize Muslims. They are the most peaceful, loving people. This is my daughter. I adopted her. She's from Afghanistan. And these are my grandkids back there. I just want you to know that I'm about peace. After two deployments in the Middle East, there, everybody should be in peace. And not only that, we should all get along, whether we're Muslim, whether we're Christian, whether we're Jews, it doesn't matter. I hope in my lifetime, and I'm 68 years old, that we can all get along and love each other, no matter what your background is. Because in my experience of being in the Middle East, they're the most humble, peaceful, loving, and caring people. People believe that they're not. These people are wonderful, wonderful people. This is her husband. He's a great man. He's a hard worker. And I learned a lot from being in the Middle East, and I asked him to come here to see the city council because I support the city council, you know, and I support peace. And that's all I wanted to say, and I appreciate, Katie, that you had the resolution along with the ready, rest of the city council members. It's very important that we have that peace here. We want that peace here. We also have a very big community of Muslims from all over the world, and I appreciate it. Thank you very much, and have a great day.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Tardagia, would you like the handheld mic?
Welcome, Jeffrey.
Give us a moment. We'll bring it right over.
Great, great to see you here and not just at Regional Transit.
Hello, Ms. Maples and Garcia. I guess you're not here through here, but please look into Sacramento housings, should we say. You just haven't heard back as further there of dealing with maintenance. Comment for, I went to the Banana Festival this last weekend. It was hard to find access to it. I was able to finally do that, got in there there, but the accessibility of getting out, couldn't do it, so ended up having to have people get my wheelchair over the accessibility point. I don't know whether that's the Banana's responsibility as a vendor, or whether it's the park district's responsibility to see accessibility, because the biggest issue was everything in William Land Park from Treeport Boulevard over all had curbs, no accessibility. So I had to go around to the street to find the one point where I could get into it. That's a comment through there. Again, for Rick and you, as there are members of Board of Transportation coming up this coming Monday, is it satisfactory that you only have for 250 people only Monday through Friday till 7:00 at night as being a means? All weekend long, those people that cannot drive are stuck. I believe the city can do better about addressing the transportation needs in the downtown arena area. Be helpful if you would do more, look more, see what more can be done, and not wait for two years to build a light rail station out there. Camp resolve. Looks like I'm about out of time. I want to say I appreciate the screen through here so it can actually read and see something. And with that, my time is gone. There's many more, but I will go to, reserve those for your RT board meeting.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Patty Shaw, then Robert Copeland, then Pinky, then Michael Coleman.
Hello, everyone. Welcome. I mean, thank you for having me here today. My name is Patty Shaw. I am a volunteer with Sacramento Act. I work with the Accountability Subcommittee of Housing and Homelessness. I am here regarding camp resolution, my one last effort to ask that you find some kind of resolution, literally, to that situation. One of the things I do is I study the RCHAP, which is the Agreement Between the County and the City, and there is a huge gap for the medically vulnerable. There are many medically vulnerable people in camp resolution that will go on the streets. They will have nowhere to go because there's no small housing. There's nowhere to go if you're on dialysis. There's nothing they can do. And I think that something better needs to be done for the people of this city. One of the things that has been running through my mind as I thought of this is, as we drive our air-conditioned cars home to our air-conditioned homes, drink all the water, or coffee, or wine, or whatever it is our beverage of choice, as we have all of this privilege, don't let this privilege take up all the room for mercy, justice, and compassion. I feel that the people, it's not just camp resolution, it is all the unhoused in Sacramento. You are the elected body who is responsible for doing something about it. I urge you to please reconsider camp resolution, and I thank you very much for listening.
Thank you for your comments. Robert Copeland. Following Mr. Copeland is Pinky, Michael Coleman, Iris, then Nikki.
Well, I'm confused. Is Sacramento City Council trying to ruin Sacramento or make it better? I think that we take one step or two steps back, in your opinion, what you're doing. As far as camp resolution, I support them. Don't close it down. Let them decide whether they want to stay or not. Not the city council, not anybody else. Also, can you work with Sacramento Housing Redevelopment, SHRA, because there's a lot of vacant apartments that can be rented out if they're properly maintained. Also, work with the organizations that will help the homeless and housing. It's still against us. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Pinky, then Michael Coleman, then Iris. And please feel free to line up in the aisle.
Good afternoon, council. Some of you know me, some of you don't. I'm on the Board of ACE, I'm on the Board of SAC CLT, I'm on, I'm Vice President of California Peer Watch. I am activist in my community who fights for housing, the unhoused, and tenant rights. I have a letter here from the president of my, one of my organizations, California Peer Watch. Her name is Amari Keratosis, and she, well, all of us, are expressing a strong opposition to the proposed eviction of residents of camp resolution. The community, which includes over 50-some-odd residents, most with disabilities, women and seniors, the support that's provided there at their current location is well-needed. The suggested relocation site, as Roseville Road that you guys all suggested for, lacks essential amenities such as electricity, running water, posing nothing but significant risk to the health and well-being of our camp resolution community. Not only that, but there's no transportation to and from Roseville Road site. You got them sent next to a jet fuel pump across Street McLean. Real nice. Residents' camp resolution have established a supportive environment that is crucial for their ongoing treatment and recovery. Many of these individuals depend on stable location and transportation to medical appointments, such as our dialysis patient, another one that's on oxygen who relies on her generator to keep her breathing. Displacing them to the site without basic utilities is not only inhumane, but is also detrimental to their physical, mental health. It is imperative that we approach this situation with compassion, commitment into upholding the dignity and the rights of individuals, especially those with disabilities. The proposed eviction would disrupt not only their lives, the vulnerable residents, and exacerbate their challenges. Instead, we should focus on providing them adequate resources and support to ensure their well-being. I urge you to consider the eviction and work collaboratively with social workers, peer support specialists as myself, and disability rights organizations to find more suitable solution. It is essential that we prioritize the health and safety of camp resolution community.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Our next speaker is Michael Coleman, and then Iris.
I have notes, I'm gonna put them away. I'm gonna shoot from the hip, because I think that's best. And I, I second that. I mean, we should have compassion, absolutely. We need to have more. And I was thinking of what that brother said. I, I agree. Could not agree more. We, regarding people of, of other parts of the world, faiths and religions, we need to be more accepting, more tolerant. I want to be vulnerable really quick. I, I go running along the railroad tracks, and I see the homeless, and, and I stopped. I felt inspired. I know it sounds weird, but I felt inspired one day to just talk to one of them and find out if they had any solutions. I mean, they're homeless, they should have solutions. I mean, they, I wanted to know what they thought. And as it turned out, I talked to a woman named Cherry, and, and I just asked her, well, what do you think the, the solution to this crisis is? I mean, you're on the street, you've been in here for, she said, I've been out here for five years. What do you think? And she started to talk, and I liked what I heard. And then I went home and I, I started writing what she said. Then I added some thoughts of my own. And I looked at it, and I realized, this, this could work. So what I did is I, I contacted, I've been in touch, Councilmember Tao, I've, I've been in touch with members of your staff, and also, I wish the mayor was here, but I'll speak to you, Vice Mayor. I, I've been in touch with, I contacted yesterday, I spoke with Cara, Cara, one of your interns, and I explained it, I started talking, and she wrote it all down. She, she created a draft proposal. And I don't know if you've seen it yet, but, but please find that and, and read it, all of you, and for the mayor, make sure the mayor reads that as well, and review it, and I'd love to, I'd love to get your thoughts on how we could implement that, if you think it's good. And please accept my request to meet. I'll be reaching out later. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Iris. Calling Iris is Nikki, then Ron Hatchbaum.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. I'm speaking as a SAC County resident and neighbor of cap, camp resolution, in staunch support of camp resolution and against the impending threatened eviction that residents face. Over the years, the city has seen residents continue to Over the years, the city has seen residents continue to speak out for camp resolution again and again. The city has heard again and again how residents of camp resolution have made a positive difference for each other and for us neighbors despite the city's tricks and broken promises. Camp resolution is a site for community building, for advocacy, for safety. Even aside from this history, given that Sacramento does not have affordable housing or homelessness services that at all adequately respond to people's needs and basic human rights, this threatened eviction is indefensible and shameful. Not evicting camp resolution residents is less than the bare minimum when it comes to the city's moral responsibility. From the heat to health needs, Sacramento's policies of evictions and sweeps and criminalization only lead to people getting further hurt, not to mention the financial drain of this approach. We county residents and neighbors stand with camp resolution and demand that the city work with instead of against camp resolution residents do.
Thank you for your comments. Following Nikki is Ron, then Kristin Kaweke, then Mary Buck.
Residents of camp resolution deserve better than a brutal eviction. I know the mechanisms of state violence are already set in place, and Monday may just be another day on the job for SAC PD, code enforcement, and the network of private contractors that carry out these forced displacement policies daily across the city. But for the 50-plus people living there, whose lives are quite literally on the line, this horrifying daily policy implementation cannot be the answer. I know it feels like all doors are closed, but what if I told you, actually, the possibilities remain endless? That you can, in fact, make a different choice, one that is human-centered and one that does not cause immeasurable harm both Monday and far into the future. You can make a choice to work with residents on long-term solutions instead of shattering their stability, stability that some hadn't felt in years, stability that already helped 16 get housed, and one woman who couldn't stay today because she's now finishing her diploma and had class, but made sure her campmates had a ride today. That kind of stability. Stability that has allowed medically vulnerable people to get the treatment and medical equipment that they need, equipment that would not be allowed at any shelter in Sacramento, but not even possible at Roseville Road, which is what has been offered. What are those with disabilities supposed to do? How about those with pets? How about those with family units? What are any of the residents supposed to do? Camp residents have been set up for failure, with the city being the primary partner, party responsible for that, not the only party, but the primary party. But success for camp resolution, and therefore the city at large and for all of you, is still possible. It does not have to be a costly, harmful eviction. This is a choice that is being made, and decision-makers can --
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Our next speaker is Ron Hotchbaum, then Kristin Kaweke. Is Ron here? Don't see movement. Kristin? Kristin Kaweke. And thank you for the phonetic. And following Kristin is Mary.
Hi. I'm a new resident of Sacramento. It's been exciting to move out of Davis and that whole grad school bubble and decide that Sacramento is a really cool city to live in. It's been exciting to hear the move towards, like, improving parks and diversity, and this has been kind of a fun meeting to attend. I'm here, though, to discuss how necessary it is to support camp resolution, kind of in the same vein of all the stuff that I was hearing about today. I see the eviction of camp resolution as like a huge step backwards. Camp resolution is something that Sacramento should be proud of. I've attended some poetry events there. It has been a really excellent space to meet Sacramentoans, and as far as like free spaces that I also heard discussed today, it's one of those. It is an established community. It is inspiring to be in communication with residents there, and just the eviction will be inhumane, and I think that it will be like something just incredibly damaging, as well as just like disastrous as far as like image for the city goes, as well as for the residents. I just really hope that there is an opportunity to rethink the action of eviction. I, like, this is, again, really inspiring situation. It's great to hear that there's going to be a move towards potentially expanding tiny homes, et cetera, and I'd like to see just Sacramento improve in this area. I distribute water sometimes in my free time. I think it's something, our city has a responsibility. I'd like to see us continue to grow and not backtrack in this area. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I have four more speakers. Mary Buck, Sarah, Julius, and Ryan Misano.
I'm a little bit nervous of talking, but all I want to say is that camp res, I'm a resident from camp resolution, and I know that camp resolution is a mess right now, and it's hard to support a mess. I don't know what to say, but all I can say is just that if you can not sweep the camp and give us a chance to get it together, clean it up, and make it work for the residents. And that's all I know what to say. It's just if we could just have another chance on what needs to be complied. You know, I know we haven't complied, and we need to comply, or working on it. I just hope that everything works out, that y'all make a good decision on not putting, or not having a sweep. I'm grateful for all of y'all. I have a hard time remembering. I get real emotional about things, so I apologize. I'm just asking for y'all not to sit down in the camp, and I understand that the camp is not, the camp hasn't complied. The residents are working on it and asking to stop the sweep. That's in motion, and this is like my last chance to be able to ask to keep it open. And that's all I have for now. Thank you. Thank you all so much.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Sarah, then Julius.
My name is Sarah. Lived in Sacramento my whole life. I have also been an outreach worker in the city and county of Sacramento for the last four years, and I've seen a lot, seen a lot out there, and I've seen how the norm of like our policy in Sacramento has become destabilization. It's become like considered normal to move people, to take their things, to force them into worse situations. We think that that's like very normal, and it's like something that we should aspire to even. And camp resolution presented something really different, and of course, it wasn't perfect. It never has been, and never will be, but the vision offered something different to this policy of destabilization. It offered an opportunity for people to have stability and safety, because we all know, I don't think anyone here would deny that we don't have housing for everyone. We all know that, and we don't have shelter for everyone either, and the conditions in the shelters are, you know, I wouldn't wish that on people I cared about either. So in this meantime, where we can't offer stability, you know, camp resolution offered stability for people, and I've seen over the last five years doing outreach in the city, so many broken promises. I've seen, you know, people at Stockton and Fruit Ridge promise that that law was going to turn into housing, and the ground hasn't even been broken yet. I saw W Street get shut down for a farmer's market. I saw the Y, Safe Parking Lot be promised to people and then taken away, and just, please don't let this just become another broken promise.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Our next speaker is Julius, and then Ryan Misano will be our final speaker.
I find it interesting to see a city council member go and assist a handicap, but they have no problem handicapping our First Amendment right. It's also interesting that we can't address city council members individually, but a city council member can call my comment ignorant, and that's a direct attack on me. So it should be fair that I should have my opinion on the city council member. I don't see why there's a law against it, we cannot address a city council member, especially if that city council member is of our district. So why can't we address them? Where is the law? Show me the law where I can't do that. What's interesting to me when I'm listening, I just thought of this just now, I'm listening to, I guess, when it comes to the camp resolution, I hate that we don't want to say this, but if you think your politicians are going to save you and, you know, help you to find shelter, they don't care about you. Look at San Francisco, for example. They couldn't get those people off the streets, and what'd they do? They gave them drugs instead. They gave them a harm reduction program, and all it did was just give them drugs. There were journalists that went down to San Francisco and actually showed what was going on. They were giving syringes, and you look at San Francisco, they all look like zombies because they're taking drugs. So these politicians are not going to help you. They said they're going to help you, but they're not. And the reason why I bring this up is because we need to start changing who our politicians are, because the politicians that we have now do not care about us. They claim to be about racial equality, all this diversity, but they don't care a lick about us. I mean, look at how a city council member just called my comment ignorant, all because I'm telling the truth about the agenda of diversity, and it's true. Diversity doesn't do anything but let people know that you are less than because of your race, your gender, and sexuality. They don't uplift you for your character, and that's the point I'm trying to prove.
Thank you for your comments. Ryan Misano.
After the amazing universe was created, God was not done. He had one final creation to make, the most loving, the one with the most compassion and grace of all of His creations, and God created woman. He blessed her with three roles. He blessed her with three roles, to care for her husband, to care for her children, and to care for her home, in that order. And He gave her an urgent monthly reminder of what her primary duty on earth was, so that she would never forget, "The hand that rocks the cradle rules the world." Unfortunately, that beautiful role for women came crashing down. We are told by the Apostle Paul that, who is put to death by the same people who put me in jail for 33 hours in the last three months, that "the love of money is the root of all evil." And indeed, it was for the love of money that in 1913, international capitalist Talmudic Jewish bankers passed the 16th Amendment enslaving America, setting up the Federal Reserve and the criminal IRS to steal from all of us with guns, stealing from every man in America. Is there anything worse than stealing from a man who is trying to provide for his family? It is no coincidence that the people who are behind this are also behind communism and the murder of 100 million people. For if you will steal from a man trying to feed his family, you will also murder. And that's not all. Just seven years later, in 1920, we had the 19th Amendment forced on us, pushing women out of the home into the workforce, into careers, colleges, and politics, where their gullible and naive natures, as was on display tonight, are easily exploited. It is time to restore the order that the greatest nations in world history always use, and that is, women are under their fathers until they are married, and then they are under the authority of their husbands. Thank you. Good night.
Sorry. And with that, we are adjourned at 4:29 p.m.